Six thousand twenty-three. If staff can call roll, please.
Ryan Pearson.
Here.
Paul Wagaman.
Paul.
What did you just call my?
Pretendance.
Six thousand twenty-three.
Present.
If staff can call roll, please.
Ryan Pearson.
Here.
Paul Wagaman.
Paul, present.
Philip Combs is excused. Lynn Larson is absent at this time. Brian Parsons is excused. Robert Estrada.
Here.
Don Daniels.
Here.
You have quorum chair.
Thank you so much. Before us, we have November fifteenth, two thousand twenty-three minutes. I'm looking for a motion.
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes as written.
Second.
So we have a first by Mr. Parsons.
Pearson.
Pearson. That's going to be my downfall, all this thinkish. All right, and then a second by Mr. Estrada.
Your last one.
So all those in favor by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions, hearing none, minutes passed as written. Any changes to our agenda tonight?
No, Mr. Chair.
Okay, at this time, I'm going to open up the public comment period where anyone wishing to speak to our fellow commissioners on any subject. And I see we have one individual that's on our Zoom meeting. So Mr. Mark Herr, if you'd like to go ahead and state your name and the city you reside in, we'd appreciate it. And.
And Mr. Chair, he is one of the new planning commission members, so he may be here tonight just to observe.
Okay.
But Mr. Herr, if you'd like to speak, you're welcome to raise your hand and do so.
Yeah, oh, there you go, let's see.
Looks like not.
Okay, no problem. So anyone else online? I don't see anyone else online.
No, Mr. Chair.
And we have a empty chamber here, so no one. So at this time, I'm going to go ahead and close the public comment period. We do not have a public hearing tonight. We do not have unfinished business. So we move to new business, the review of the initial draft two thousand twenty-four housing element.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and this is, it's called new business, but really, this is what you've been talking about now since September of two thousand twenty-two, and it's somewhat fitting and ironic at the same time that, for those of you that are about to exit the count, the planning commission, you're seeing the fruition of what you've been working on for the last twelve, fourteen months, but here we go. So as you all are well aware, we are in the middle of our every ten-year process to update the city's comprehensive plan, development regulations, and critical areas ordinances. The other things that are being reviewed as part of the two thousand twenty-four process for Lakewood are the three subarea plans, so downtown, as well as Lakewood Station District, and then third, the Tillicum Woodbrook Neighborhood Plan is what it's going to be called. But tonight, I just wanted to give you a preview of what the new element is going to look like. The comprehensive plan itself is getting reorganized and updated in its look, as well as content. So just wanting to show you the process that's happened over the last fourteen months, as I said. This was begun in two thousand twenty-two. Since then, the planning commission has had, I think, at pretty much every meeting that you've had since then, some touch on this twenty-four, twenty-four process. And in addition to the regular ten years review that has to happen, because of state law changes, or we have a very active state legislature regarding housing, there were a number of bills that also increased the changes that were required as part of this next process. So these are the housing growth targets that Lakewood has now been assigned, and not only is it the total number as it was first set up to be in prior sessions and prior update processes, but now there is the requirement to plan for identify the number of units that will be for various area median income brackets. And so on this top table, you'll see across the bottom in bold, there's a total of nine, three, seventy-eight new housing units of whatever kind, and then that's broken out by area median income at various brackets. Some of them have to be permanent supportive housing, others are not, but they are affordable to various incomes by whoever builds them, building that into the pro forma. It's also looking at incentives and other programs that subsidizing organizations might be able to do for these housing units. And then in addition to that number, there's the five hundred and seventy-four emergency units that Lakewood needs to plan for.
Mr. Estrada.
Yes.
Information that you provided to us showed that experience has not shown that our growth has been small. And that these, we probably won't get to these figures. So how did we get to these figures?
Yeah.
If our growth doesn't show that we're going to get there.
This is the tension that has been ever since, really, the Growth Management Act was adopted, but it more so now because of the focus on housing in this cycle. There's been, and you've probably heard Mr. Buhr over the years call it a paper exercise, where the city is itself required to plan for, to allow for X, Y, and Z, and then if the city has done its job in terms of policy encouragement or incentivizing or requirements, and shown on zoning that this is where things can happen, it's up to the private market to bring things to bear. And so that will be exacerbated more and more so over time. You've got, as you said in the packet, just some information that was actually completed last year or early this year of the Housing Needs Assessment, and it showed you current activity, and then also over the last twenty years, if I remember right, the number of units created per year and the type that they were, and it's nowhere near what the annual output would need to be to hit these numbers.
Yeah.
And that's not a surprise, I didn't think, to state agencies, let alone people here in Lakewood. So we continue to do this, we have to, but whether and if there's going to be some sort of consequence at some point when they say, look, you're not hitting your numbers, it's up to the market to bring housing to the ground, it's not up to the city to do that. So it's just going to be this game back and forth.
So these aren't our numbers, these are state numbers.
Yeah, and to answer your question further, the State Office of Financial Management, the Department of Commerce, Puget Sound Regional Council, all do population forecasts. Office of Financial Management has been doing it the longest, and so they have, they look at past growth patterns, they look at population growth that's happening just from natural births here in the state, they look at people coming here, people leaving here, and they make predictions now into the future as to how much growth they anticipate for the state, and then they break it down to the county level. Once that's done, Pierce County and all of the cities go through a process by which they say, okay, this is the countywide number. Who has capacity to take numbers X, Y, or Z? And so these numbers that you see here were negotiated in two thousand twenty-two and then adopted earlier this year as the updated population for Lakewood.
Mr. Pearson.
So you said exacerbated over time. Is that something like, you know, if, if we're supposed to accommodate for five hundred and seventy-four units by, you know, twenty forty-four, and say, you know, we don't get anywhere near that by twenty forty-four, or and by twenty thirty, you know, they re-reconcile things or something? Are we still like, you know, do they still just say, okay, well, just because those didn't happen, we're still going to add more? Or do they recalculate and say, okay, this is where we're actually at, none of that happened, and you know, now we still only need seven or five seventy-four, or is it like, going to be, well, we still need five seventy-four, plus we need another five seventy-four?
The latter is probably the case, up to this point. Up to this point, it's been a rolling ten-year cycle, right? So right now, we have on the books a growth target of, I think it was actually twenty thirty, and we're a little bit behind because of COVID, et cetera, on doing this new cycle, but it, it has been where the first one to twenty-ten was a number, then it was in the twenty-twenty number, now we're at twenty-thirty. And I don't think any jurisdictions of our size or larger have actually hit their numbers. Some of the smaller cities have, because their numbers are smaller, and in some cases, that's where people are wanting to move right now. So there's actually some small cities that are saying, you're not letting us grow fast enough. But Lakewood and larger, for the most part, the answer has been, we're planning for it, it's just not happening. And so to date, the only teeth in this whole process is if Lakewood were to not do this, for instance, if we were to say as a jurisdiction, we're not going to plan for this many housing units, and here's why, you could have Puget Sound Regional Council ultimately say, okay, you don't qualify for transportation funding. That, that's the teeth at this point.
Yeah, so could this lead into a situation where, you know, we have just this very modest growth, and we have this modest density, but our, our zoning really allows for a lot more, and then at some point in time, we can have a pretty wide discrepancy of like, things that are like next to each other, because, you know, they haven't kind of happened over time, and then all of a sudden, you know, the, the chart goes like that, so.
And that's kind of where we're at, I would say, right now. Because you have now with the two new bills regarding middle housing and accessory dwelling units coming into single-family areas.
Yeah.
What's that, what that is going to do is, in theory, next to those single-family homes that have been there since World War Two, you could have a sixplex, you could have a mid-rise, and that is now something that the city is required to allow. So, yeah, and, and it's paper planning versus what's actually in the market, and for whatever reason, people are building it or not.
Mr. Larson?
My question is along similar lines, is how accurate are these numbers and how real are they? Just, and based on what you said, we're taking numbers that we didn't hit and adding to them. And how do we know that the accumulation is, is accurate and true? At what point is there a check and balance to say, you know, okay, we need to start now with, with a new assessment and, and make certain that we're working with true numbers? Like you, I've watched these for years, and nobody, nobody ever hits them. And, and so they, they remain this nebulous thing out there that we theoretically have guiding us. And I wonder just what the reality of that is.
Yeah, and that was one of the messages that was strongly voiced by local government to the state for this population allocation, was to say, stop telling us we're behind because of ten years ago or twenty years ago, let's look at right now. Things have changed since the GMA was adopted, whatever other reason you want to cite. But the decision was to continue going with the process that's in place. Office of Financial Management statewide and Puget Sound Regional Council within the four counties altogether, if you were to look at their big number, they're pretty accurate, they're within a couple of percentage. Where the rubber hits the road, of course, is at each city's level or town's level, and that's where things aren't happening like the Growth Management theorizes it should. And so Lakewood as one of the bigger cities in Pierce County, Tacoma, and then up even into Seattle, the growth is not matching the rate and the projection that the Growth Management Act is anticipating. So we continue to have reality and paper not meeting because of market forces. And whether and when the legislature and agencies will say we need to reset, couldn't tell you that right now, we're just, we're continuing to roll down this hill.
Already, continue on.
Okay.
Oh, you have one more, Mr. Larson?
So do we have budgets and financial planning that are based on these on these numbers?
And, and actually, that is, let me start over, yes. And that can be a good thing in terms of transportation projects, for instance. So if you are projected to have this many people coming in, for instance, into the downtown, that is something that you use with your grant and your infrastructure funding process to say, this is how many people we need to plan for, so we need this size of a street, or we need these kinds of improvements to our parks. And so the funding assumes this is going to happen at this point over time. If that continues, I couldn't tell you, but that's the way it is right now.
All right, yep, great, go ahead.
Okay, so you know this as well, but I'll just restate it for the record and for our new planning commission members. Our downtown subarea plan, which was adopted in two thousand eighteen, actually anticipated about a quarter of the city's growth between now and two thousand thirty-five would go there. And then in two thousand twenty-one, the Lakewood Station District Subarea said, we're going to get about eighteen percent there. Those numbers do not anticipate this allocation by area median income. So this analysis is going to be done as part of the twenty-four process. You may see some edits to the subareas just in regard to that. So what we have done is take a look at the regular GMA process, the recent changes regarding middle housing and accessory dwelling units, and started to analyze what this will look like and how it will read. This also reflects the steering committee that was put together from the public last year, and the draft that I'm about to walk you through includes information that came from our consultant, that came from agency recommendations, and then that public feedback. It is by no means done, but I just wanted to make sure you guys had an opportunity to see this. You have seen this before, this is the two in the four units per lot in various parts of the city. This is the map that breaks that out, the yellow is where it would be the two units per lot, the orange is where it's the four units per lot, because it's closer to transit. And then those pink and blue hatched areas are the areas where it would not apply, because it's a critical area or a buffer. And so this is not a citywide, just blanket application of these new rules. It is, in the yellow, it'll be a certain density, in the orange, it would be a certain density. This is a little more breakdown regarding the area near transit. On the left-hand side, the area that is within a quarter mile of either the Sounder Station, or the reason it's a a U shape here is because this is where an anticipated bus rapid transit route is coming through Lakewood eventually. This is where there has to be four units per uni, sorry, four units per lot. And the half-mile on the next one, so you'll see it's a wider swath through the city. This is where no off-street parking can be required by the city because of the location of those rap, rapid transit and the Sounder Station. No, we don't have the rapid transit route yet, but yes, you have to plan like it's going to be there. So this is showing you where there will be higher density allowed, and also where additional parking requirements would be prohibited. So this may be, and granted, a lot of this is not residential areas anyway, but for those areas in the city that do fall in here, that they may be the most affected. All right, so what we have done, as I mentioned, was a housing needs assessment, which was included for you again tonight. There is a checklist that the city uses to say, okay, have we met all the requirements? We've gone through that process, and then we have those maps, some of which I just walked through with you. What we also are going to include is new census data as we move forward, a number of other data resources, like the American Community Survey, the Department of Commerce. And then we're going to also be using maps that update from the last time you saw our own comprehensive plan maps that become all a much more uniform look and all updated information. Some of the stuff that's in our comp plan right now is from two thousand twelve, so we're just trying to fix all that. Okay, so this is an example of what you will see for those of you who will be with us. Each goal or policy within the comprehensive plan itself. This, in this instance, it's actually a new recommended policy. This is the language. And why this is being proposed, it's because of the state law changes, and so it's adding the targets by income level that we just went through. And so here is language that was initially written, and then you see in green the language that is now recommended, and that again is a result of the steering committee and the work that we've done internally. So where it went from ensure that housing exists for all economic segments, you now have promote a supply of housing that supports all economic segments of the population, and then it's broken out the number of units the city needs to plan for. So this is the way every single policy will be laid out for you, it's what it is right now, if any change at all will happen, and if so, why? And then what the new language will be. Here's another example where you'll see kind of the opposite situation. You have one that's called increased housing opportunities for upper-income households, and then you've got a subsection to that. This is actually being removed, because it goes against all of what we've been talking about for the last year with housing now. The idea is you plan for all economic segments, and there's language in our comp plan as well that says things like preserve single-family neighborhoods. That doesn't go with the middle housing and the accessory dwelling unit requirements anymore. So there will be some significant policy changes proposed here.
Yep, Mr. Estrada.
Just a comment. Comment, if I recall, we. Were concerned about the fact that our retirees, upper-income retirees had no place to downsize to within Lakewood. So they would be going to, for university place, for example, and that was a concern. So if I recall, we were looking at cottage housing as a, maybe a substitute. Cottage housing is still on the books.
Yes.
But it's not being emphasized anymore.
Not as much, and I don't know if that's because what you have in the middle housing bill is an assumption of a higher density than the cottage housing would be built at. You know, you've got an existing home on a parcel that could be six thousand square feet. You're not going to be putting three or four separate cottages, it's going to be a duplex or an attached ADU or something like that at that scale. But that is part of why the state legislature did what it did, was to say, people need options. It can't just be single-family or apartment, you've got to have the stuff in between for downsizers, for startups, for, you know, all, all types of housing are needed. But whether Lakewood's senior population can find a place in Lakewood that they can move down to, or empty nest, whatever it is, will depend on the private market bringing it here. Yeah.
Thank you, thank you. Okay.
So this is what our initial housing element intro will now look like, and this is going to be a much stripped-down version from what you would look at today in the comprehensive plan. The housing chapter, first of all, is new in and of itself. Right now, everything is under land use, so we're creating a housing one, and it's specific to it. But this is the introduction, rather than pages and pages of stuff. It's just going to be, this is what it's for, this is what the intent is behind it, and then we get right into what's listed here, there's nine goals, and then sixty-one policies. Oops. We'll have a little bit of a background as to why this is required and some of the history for the city. But all of the demographic information and background stuff, history of the city, those kinds of things are all going to go into an appendix. So as time goes by, that can sit separate from any changes to, to policy, and this becomes a much easier document to read. So here would be your draft land use one with the new language. Again, supporting all economic segments, and then you have the accompanying subpolicies within that. So as time goes by, all of this is going to be in front of you to show you the old, the reasons why there's a change, and what the new language is, and then you'll have a clean copy. Same thing here with two, there were some things that were removed, so this would be the language that remains after those things taken out. And then there were also things that were added, so for instance, encouraging affordable homeownership opportunities for low and moderate income households, especially first-time homebuyers, that is a new policy for the Lakewood Comp Plan, and there's others that will be in there as well. And I will just say, you're used to seeing red line or strikeout, meaning language struck out or underlined. This is such a massive change, you're going to get that chart that says before and after, and then you're going to get a clean document. I'm not going to read you all these, but this is what will be coming to you eventually.
A comment, no, Mr. Estrada?
Yes.
I also saw in looking at these goals that and especially number four and number five, four, support the variety of housing options. That four-point-four says it's a supportive ADUs. Okay, five, promote special needs homes, again, encourages the use of ADUs, not short-term rentals, ADUs.
Correct.
So that's going to be in conflict with a push to use the ADUs as short-term rentals, the way I see it.
This is reflecting what is required in state law, the language that the bill flat out says you have to include, and then your, your regulations have to implement these things. So where the city sits right now, and, and just a reminder, the planning commission did its recommendation to the council about the annual development regulations, which included whether or not to have accessory dwelling units could be short-term rentals. The council ultimately did not take any action on that at all. They said, we're going to look at this as part of the twenty-four process. So your recommendation stands, it'll be in front of them again next May or June. But as it sits, they didn't do anything at all. So they're going to be looking at this coupled with all the data we have now about accessory dwelling units as short-term rentals elsewhere, if it's a good idea or not. They may well take your recommendation, or they may take a different path, we'll see.
Thank you.
And that's it, so this, I, I just wanted to let you see that this is starting to come together, this is what you can anticipate next year, and I would just say a heartfelt thank you to you for the last year and a half of hearing this, about this, talking about this, and providing direction, because it isn't, it's also incorporated into some of this language.
Yep. Any other questions, Mr. Estrada?
Just a comment, and looking at, again, the, the goals, the consolidation or the rewrite. Why didn't I think of that? I mean, it's so concise, it's really good.
Yeah.
I think.
I don't, I don't know how else you could do it, because if you tried to just keep the document with changes all in it, it would be gobbledygook for anybody. So, yeah.
Looks good.
Yeah, it was definitely easier reading.
Yeah.
And to follow the, the whole thing. So I commend the staff for trying to condense it to where it's easier to follow and read, so, thank you. Any other comments, Mr. Larson? Nope, sounds good. Okay.
And if I could just finish this topic up, then we did have one open house, if you remember, in front of your last meeting, which was packed room, I've never seen it this whole for anything. The technical difficulties we had online, I'm sure you heard about. It was rerecorded, and, and now anybody can watch what was said. Obviously not the meeting itself, but the content has now been shared with the public. We will have two more open houses, one in January, one in February, that will still keep talking about housing and parking, because that's where I think a lot of people really are concerned. We will have others later into the year, but those two will be similar to what was presented here in November. That's it.
Great, I appreciate that. Okay, now, the recognition of the planning commissioners with expiring terms. How appropriate.
So those of you who are leaving, you have certificates from the mayor in front of you. And again, I said this before the meeting, but some of you didn't hear, our director, Dave Buhr sends his apologies for not being here tonight, but he wanted to extend his thank you to those of you who have been serving some for quite a while. He apologizes he couldn't be here as well. But I would myself like to say thank you to all of you as well. The amount of time and effort that you have to put in to be on this planning commission, especially with the stuff we've been talking about this year. It takes a lot, and so it's, it's not unnoticed, it's certainly been appreciated. And for those of you who are stepping away and doing something completely unrelated to city stuff, bon voyage, wish you the best, hope to see you again somewhere. Mr. Pearson, we'll see you soon on the council. Yep. And then those of you who are staying on, our first meeting of the year is January third. It will be pretty quick in the year, and that'll be the day to elect a chair and a vice chair and look at your work plan for twenty-four. But once again, I just want to say thank you very much, and Mr. Daniels, especially for you, the time that you've spent as chair, you've done a fantastic job.
Oh, thank you so much. Yep, Mr. Larson?
We've got these new commissioners coming aboard. Would it be appropriate to do a, a review of all of our bios for each other, so we have some kind of an understanding of the new folks that are joining us?
A review?
They could, they, they would know more about us as well.
The, I'm sorry, the bios, is that what you asked for? Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm happy to share that. There was information that was actually in this last Monday night's council packet, it had their application. So if, I'll send the link to that, and you can review everybody's background.
Thank you.
Who do we thank for this?
Yes, Mr. Estrada?
Who do we thank for these? Thank you.
Yes, thank you, thank you, these are awesome, thank you.
Who did these?
Thank you.
This is Tiffany?
Yeah.
This is from you, thank you.
Yeah, yeah. So, Mr. Wagman, you want to say anything, closing remarks? Nothing? Mr. Estrada, any closing remarks?
No, I think I've spoken enough.
No problem, and never enough, all right. Oh, Mr. Larson?
I'm gone the month of January.
Okay, all right. Mr. Pearson?
Oh, just, yeah, thank you for all the hard work and, you know, working with us over the past five years since I've been on the commission. Learned a lot, and it's been a great time, so I appreciate it.
Yeah, as well, I'd like to thank the staff and also the fellow commissioners. This position is really, you guys have made it easy, everyone that's been on here. And I, it's been an honor, and I truly learned a lot. I won't be away for long, I'll come and visit you, and, and maybe out, sitting out there in the audience, I can kind of harass the the commissioners and ask some hard questions. But I welcome also the new commissioners coming aboard. It is a little bit of a learning frustration at first, but it does get easier, and truly, I think the diversity of the new commissioners coming aboard with the different talents and expertise, I think it will be great on this moving forward. So again, I thank you so much, everyone, and especially the staff, it's been excellent to work with. So again, I thank you so much, everyone, and especially the staff that's been excellent to work with you. I'm going to probably harass Mr. Buhr before his final days coming as well. We've had long conversations and, and different ideas and suggestion. He's been a great mentor for this type of a position and this filling out, being on this commission. And it was considerably different, the commission versus the Planning Advisory Board, meaning that this, yeah, the Planning Advisory Board that we shared on before. So like I say, I think it's, the city has grown, but also these positions are critical of the background that the commission gets to learn, listen, and then provide some feedback to the council. And there's not too many times that our recommendation hasn't been taken up or approved on our recommendations, very few. So there again, I thank each and every one of you for the participation and the dedication of time. So thank you.
One last thank you to Ms. Deveraux.
Yeah.
For keeping her on top of us and reminding us to RSVP.
Yeah, RSVP in the minutes and all of those things. So makes it easier to read. So I, again, thank you so much. And whoever the next chair is, you have to be kind to Ms. Deveraux because you have to sign the document. If you can't sign it, you have to come in and making sure if there's any changes, you have to re-sign it. So she's been a great person to have all these documents signed and dated and everything. So thanks again, appreciate it. Any other final comments? We don't have our council representative here tonight, I don't see. So we wish them all, Mr. Larson?
I just wanted to submit that I've been studying subdivisions around the county in different cities as to the, we're talking about the parking and the, and the impact on the streets. And it seems to me that if planned for parking on the street, at least one side works just fine. Even if it reduces it to one lane, most of the time or narrower lanes, people seem to be able to deal with it. And these are new subdivisions that we are being built with these factors. And they, the, they're all pretty peaceful little subdivisions.
Great. Okay. So for the new commissioners and the existing commissioners that are still going to be on, you have January 3rd at Wednesdays at 6:30 to look forward to meeting everyone. And I think we'll call this meeting adjourned.